All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being patient. I'm sorry for our technical difficulties here. But we'll take it from the top again. I'll start my own report and continue. So just be with us. On December seventeenth will be our senior holiday party. That has been moved because FEMA is occupying the Civic Center, so we had to move that party to the seventeenth. The council and the mayor will be present. They'll be serving the food that evening. Mayor, under your report, if you would talk about resolutions A, B, C, and D about the gymnasium floor at the rec center, explain a little bit of the costs and what's going on with the procedure. And also, on behalf of the entire council, we wish you a very happy birthday. Councilmember Hav.
Thank you, Council President. So I just wanted to give a few updates about the library. The library is still going strong with both virtual and in-person programming. They're having some programming tomorrow, which is they're calling a program doubleheader. First, at eleven AM, they'll be having a Play-Doh Storytime, which will be in-person at the library. And then in the afternoon, at one PM, virtually, they'll be having a starting a business in New Jersey. So there's always something to do at the library for both adults and children. Also, the Friends of the Library, which is the fundraising group for the library, will be having its first meeting of the season, which will be Wednesday, seven PM. That will be at the library. All are welcome to attend, and they are still looking for board members, a vice president, and a secretary for the board for this year. A little update about the farmer's market. This Sunday that just passed, we had our Fall Alpaca Day. It was very successful. It's a great event for families. Kids seem to love the alpacas and adults alike. The market will still be running until November seventh. Upcoming, we have a fall craft on October tenth, which is the same day as the Little Falls Biz Fall Festival. On the twenty-fourth, the Little Falls Biz will be hosting at the market a dog, judging a dog costume, excuse me, contest. And on October thirty-first, which is Halloween, we'll have trick-or-treating at the market sponsored by the Recreation Department. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Quadi.
Thank you, Council President. So last Tuesday, I was able to attend actually both Board of Ed meetings, the Passaic Valley Board of Ed and the Little Falls School District Board of Ed Education meetings. While the Passaic Valley Board of Ed meeting was uneventful, it was nice to be back in my alma mater, spend a little time speaking with the new superintendent. Then I came to Little Falls and attended the Little Falls Board of Education meeting and watched a presentation on the curriculum about what is being taught in the schools and sometimes more importantly, what is not being taught. And the presentation was was very well received by the people that were there. And I was happy to have listened to it. It was done by Superintendent Marinelli and Principal Phillips. The following night, I attended the marching band, the PV marching band, performed at Wilmore Road Park, and it was great. And I was happy to learn that there are actually eighth graders from the three towns that are also invited to perform into the band. And so they have twenty-nine members. And it's a nice program that sort of gets some of the kids acclimated to Passaic Valley even before they may attend there. So it was great. As far as the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee, next month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And while the committee has decided not to do the vigil this year, there are some concerns about about gatherings and COVID and whether people would be willing to come and speak. There will be purple ribbons placed around town like there are every year. And the committee will be setting up tents at the Farmer's Market and the Little Falls Business Association Fall Festival, which is taking place in Wilmore Road Park on October tenth from one to four PM. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quadi, for bringing us all that important information. Councilmember Van Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. Some updates on my end. Just working with the mayor as well as the engineers from H two M to reschedule the follow-up meeting that we're going to have with the residents on Jacobus in regards to the speed humps. If you recall, last month, we had a conversation with the residents on Jacobus and Van Pelt. We were able to finalize the Van Pelt speed hump locations. But at the meeting with Jacobus, we had some residents that had said, hey, I'd rather not have it here. Can we do it here? So the engineers went back and pulled together their recommendations for three potential speed humps on Jacobus. So we're just nailing down the date. We're hoping to do it sometime next week. It'll be either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. We're just trying to make sure everybody's available. So hopefully, we'll get that resolved next week, and we can move ahead with the speed humps on both Jacobus and Van Pelt. I do also want to put a couple of reminders out this week. This Saturday at eleven o'clock, right around the corner over here in Union Ave, is the Little Falls PVA. Union Three Forty-six is Annual Oktoberfest. So if you're in the area, please stop by. There's going to be a number of different activities for all ages. So please join us if you can. And then next Monday here outside, in honor of Italian-American Heritage Month, we are going to have a flag raising in front of Town Hall at six PM. And then we'll have our regular meeting at seven, where there'll be a proclamation read by the mayor as well. So if you can join us next Monday at six PM, you're more than welcome to attend. I just want to thank, you know, Sheriff Richard Burning for being here today and donating the new vehicle, well, used vehicle to the fire department. It was something definitely that's appreciated by the department. It'll help replace what they currently have. So it's it's great to know when we can reach out to the sheriff. He's able to help us out when he can. I also want to mention, too, as Councilman Quadi alluded to, last week, the two of us were at the Passaic Valley High School marching band event. Kudos to band director Mike DeLucia. He had reached out last month and said, hey, we'd love to put on a concert in town. Can we do it? And we said absolutely. And we were able to, and we had to change the date or two, but we were able to land on a day that worked for everyone. And it was nice to see all the kids. And as Councilman Quadi alluded to, it's not just high school students. There's actually some students that are in the seventh grade that actually have been able to join the band over the years. But it's a nice feeder program. You know, we talk about athletics and the different sports, but, you know, the band's doing the same thing. So it's nice to see the three towns that are involved with that. I also just want to follow up, and I know, Mayor, you're probably going to talk about this. You know, at their last meeting, obviously, you know, everybody was raw from the events that took place earlier this month, thanks to IDA. I've been very vocal, as you heard me last time, and I know the mayor's working behind the scenes to set up a meeting. You know, we have this regional flood board where Totowa, Woodland Park, and Little Falls are involved. And, you know, we're looking to bring that group together and invite all the players that need to be involved. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on. It's getting the right people in the room and having the conversations that need to be to happen, whether it's the sacred river to Peckman River, you know, whether it's engineers, it's federal, state, local, county. It's just time we have those conversations and figure out a plan going forward. Because if you saw last Thursday when there was another rainstorm, I think most of us probably had the PTSD again when we saw the water rising again. And you can't live like that. Nobody wants to go through that. You know, we're all dealing with the aftershocks and all the repairs. But, you know, we just need to finally come together as a group and say, okay, what can we do now? Is it immediate next step versus long term? Because every time a storm comes now, everybody's going to be on edge. And it's just something I know we all want to avoid, me personally as well. You know, I went through this for the first time in fourteen years where I am, and I don't want to go through it again. And anything that we can do to make things change, I am all for that. And I know there's some residents here that feel the same way. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Van Cherry. Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you, Council President. So again, happy birthday, Mayor. Many, many years. So just wanted to report, two Saturdays ago, on the eighteenth, we did have our townwide garage sale. It was a great success. We had almost one hundred and fifty homes participating, including my own. So I was able to unleash some of my previously owned products that I did not need any longer for a fraction of the cost of a dollar or more. So it made me very happy. And hopefully, the people who came and bought my American Girl Dolls, Girl Dolls also happy. So and also, I just wanted to thank you, thank the rec department very much for putting out the signs and also taking them down. As you know, we have participant signs that go up on the house for anybody who registers for that garage sale. So thank you very much to the rec department. And then this Sunday, we do, this Sunday, October third, we do have our five K coming back again this year. As a result of IDA, the PV tract did suffer some damage, so we didn't have to change the location. So it will be taking place at the Little Falls Sports and Recreation Center. It's the start and the end. So we're actually pretty excited to actually bring it over to the rec center. So I think it's a nice outcome. And although the route is actually almost identical. So happy to bring people to come and see the beautifully refurbished center. So again, there is still time to sign up. We are also taking same-day registration. So if anybody is interested, they can also feel free just to show up that day. It is a nine AM start time. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaver. Mayor, the floor is yours, but also if you would include the ribbon cutting that you were at the other day, the new, a business that came into town that really have in town that also was one of the first businesses that have put up the new sign with our new sign ordinance. And it really looks appropriate. And so if you would include that in your report, we appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the birthday wishes. My back and joints tell me I'm getting older every day. But today really confirms that I'm another year older. So thank you for the warm wishes. As far as the flood board, the flood board is something that, you know, pre-COVID started. We were having quarterly meetings. Unfortunately, as a result of COVID, the meetings came to a stop because we were meeting in person with the two other towns. I do think it's time that we get back on the horse here and call for a regional flood board meeting, including Totowa and Woodland Park. You know, all three towns were affected. You know, a lot of them were due to localized street flooding and things of the sort, and not necessarily river-related in Totowa. Although they did have some river issues themselves. Woodland Park, and of course, here in Little Falls, affected by the Peckman River and some localized flooding at the same time. There's a number of areas in town where regardless of it being near the Peckman or the Passaic Rivers tend to flood on a fairly regular basis with storms that in the past may not have necessarily caused flooding in the areas. You know, this is definitely, you know, again, we never actually forget about flooding here in Little Falls. It never actually leaves our mind. But it's it's something that, you know, many of us would like to forget. But we can't. We need to continue to push forward to try to find solutions to resolve the flooding, whether it be the Peckman, whether it be the Passaic River, or whether it be some of the localized street flooding that may benefit from just additional drainage or or something of the sort. And having meetings with engineers, with other professionals who might be able to assist in resolving these is something that needs to continue to happen. And ultimately, on these larger projects, the support of our federal partners is something that we're going to need here in Little Falls. With an annual local budget of, you know, approximately twenty million dollars a year, a project that's one hundred and fifty to three hundred million dollars, depending on the scope of it, is just simply something that the township cannot fund themselves. You know, so the federal support is something that is absolutely needed. It's a must to continue to protect our residents here in Little Falls. So I'm hoping that over time, this will come to fruition and sooner rather than later. As far as you heard, Council President referenced a grand opening this weekend. There was a grand opening here in Little Falls of Palazzoni Pastry Lab, a brand of Palazzoni Bakery that is was was in Wayne on Route twenty-three. They remain there. But they have also opened a new location here in Little Falls. Right now, they are open. They are able to walk in. There's parking in the rear. You're able to walk in, grab yourself some pastries and go. The pastries are outstanding. Anyone that's ever been there to the Wayne location in the past knows that they certainly make some outstanding pastries. So we welcome them here to Little Falls. As you also heard, they are one of the, one of, one of the first new signs pursuant to our new sign ordinance with some gorgeous gooseneck lighting over it. It really, I think, makes an impact here. And as we continue to gain compliance through the entire town over time, I think it will really continue to give this this town and our main street a real facelift here. So very excited about that. With respect to the resolutions that are on this evening's agenda, there are four of them. Resolution A is resolution authorizing the township of Little Falls to enter into an interlocal agreement with the interlocal purchasing system, AKA TIPS Purchasing Co-op. It's not uncommon for municipalities to enter into various co-ops, depending on the services or the goods that are provided under particular co-ops. This one in particular is going to allow us to redo our gym floor at the rec center. It is something that has been in the works now. I believe this is the third year. Two years ago, when it was originally investigated, and we believe there would be a relatively low cost in order to do so. Unfortunately, after some testing, it was determined that determined that the floor there was a mercury-based floor. Again, while not dangerous to play on, so long as it remains intact and not in crumbling order, it is something that does require a hazardous, you know, removal. And in doing so, the cost of the project went up by about three hundred thousand dollars as somewhat of a surprise. I'm sorry, it might have gone up to five hundred thousand dollars, which was somewhat of a surprise to us when that was eventually determined. Resolution A, and you'll hear me, I'm going to combine that along with really Resolution B in one second. Resolution A will allow us to purchase a new gym floor that we are going to be installing in the gym, again, through a co-op, which allows us oftentimes to get better pricing at much faster rates than going out to bid. So Resolution A will allow us to do that with Dynamic Sports Construction through the TIPS Purchasing Co-op. And I will couple that with Resolution B, which is the resolution authorizing the township of Little Falls to issue a purchase order to Dynamic Sports Construction for the removal and replacement of the gymnasium floor at the Little Falls Sports and Recreation Complex at one sixty Patterson Ave for what will be a cost of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Again, this number is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than we originally anticipated after finding out that it was a mercury-based floor. So we are thrilled to have been able to find Dynaforce Flooring as part of this and Dynamic Sports Construction to allow us to complete this renovation inside the Recreation Center at almost a quarter of a million dollar savings to us here in Little Falls. So I'm happy about that. Resolution C is the resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program. In short, every year, we apply for a grant that is titled Safe Routes to School. And Safe Routes to School is a program that assists in installing sidewalks and providing children with a safe route to school. This year's application is going to be made in an attempt to connect a sidewalk from the bottom of Francisco Ave and East Lindsey at the start of Wilmore Road, along Wilmore Road up to Prospect, which will allow students on the other side of Francisco in that section of town to safely make their way to school one by using Wilmore Road up to Prospect and then on their way to to school one there. So the engineering is in process, and Mr. Lemanowicz is in the process of designing some of that. I don't know. This is, so the Safe Routes, a project is underway. And the fourth resolution this evening is the Resolution Awarding Change Order to AA Burn LLC for downtown Little Falls Streetscape. This is our Section Six of our Streetscape, which was just concluded on April. There is a change order of forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and forty-one cents, which makes the revised contract amount two hundred and forty thousand, one seventy-nine, forty-one. This resolution and this addition and change order to this project is still underneath the grant award amount that we received. So we're thrilled that even with this change order, there's no additional cost to taxpayers here in Little Falls to have completed that section of the Streetscape. And that is the four resolutions that we have this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the council have any questions, comments regarding the manager's report? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Good evening, Council, Councilor Friend. Do you have anything for this governing body? Sir, I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only. Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry. Second by Councilmember Quadi. All those in favor voting for agenda items only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus, please read the public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time. This is all discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who join the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus. The floor is now open for agenda items. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Scoop from William Street.
Sir, I wonder, Mr. Kraus, were you able to hear that?
Yes, I was.
Go ahead, sir.
I would like to share with this council the hardship that FEMA is putting on homeowners who are on their list of repetitive loss.
Sir, we can, you can do that comment under public comments. This public, this public comment is for agenda items. You'll have an opportunity to come up to the floor and talk about those exact issues. You have, and I'll tell you when you could come up, but at this point, it's agenda. Do you have anything concerning the agenda you'd like to talk about at this time?
Well, I heard about solutions about, you know, what to do about the flood problem.
Come back up under a different public comment.
Oh, that's a different one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. The floor is open. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to talk? Anyone in the audience that would like to talk? Seeing none, we will move forward. Have a motion to pose to the public comment for agenda items.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havett, seconded by Councilmember Quadi. All those in favor opposing to public, to the public for agenda items signify by saying aye. All those opposed, that motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Quadi, seconded by Councilmember Seaver. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Havett?
Yes.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scovva?
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting for the public general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Havett. All those in favor of voting for general public matters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion signify by saying nay. This motion carries. Mrs. Kraus, please read the public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
You don't have to say your name and address, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. I feel the council is the for, like, they have firsthand knowledge of how government agencies' decision affects the people. And FEMA's decision to put people, people's property on a repetitive loss list and then having a monopoly to only NFIP to issue a flood policy for that property is un-American. I mean, a monopoly is un-American. You should have a choice of shopping around and getting the best price. And, you know, under thing they say, your policy has been identified as an NFIP repetitive loss property. If you receive any other bill, other or renewal of offer to have the policy written as a new NFIP policy, please disregard these offers. This policy is the only policy that may be written for this property. I feel that is unfair to homeowners. And I feel that they are trying to destroy my piece of American dream to have a home and be a homeowner. And their fifty percent increase, when you add the twenty-five percent credit from the community floodplain, and then on top of that, another eighteen-plus fees, twenty percent, that's like forty-five percent increase in one premium, one year. Okay? Last year, another, you know, huge increase. And year after year, these increases are getting bigger because the premiums are more and more. So when is enough? When is enough? I mean, are they trying to, like, make me lose my house?
Sir, you don't have to answer. Sir, you don't have to answer this question if you want. If you do, please feel, please feel so that. Two years ago, do you know what your insurance premium was that you weren't paying for flood? Well, do you know how much it rate went up in cost?
I, I know the percentage is, well, the dollar amount, like, three years ago, they went up like maybe three hundred. Then it doubled the next year to six hundred. And now, besides, on top of the twenty-five percent community credit, it's seven hundred. So, like, that's over a thousand dollars. Sixteen hundred dollars in, like, the last three years. You know, sixteen hundred dollars is a lot of money to somebody on.
It is a lot of money.
You know, and the increases are getting higher because the premiums are high and higher here as you add on those, you know, increases. When is it going to stop? You know, how, how, I mean, I could see, you know, ten point, ten percent, you know, fifteen percent. But twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five percent every year, that's too much. Someone needs to do something about.
Councilmember Van Cherry, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I get your frustration. I was talking to a resident over the weekend who, you know, voiced her displeasure with FEMA and some of the issues with her insurance as well, and put her in touch with the representative from the Congresswoman's office. Yeah, it is, how do I put this nicely? I mean, everybody gets a different message, I think, too. Because I had a call with my FEMA rep this weekend, and he's telling me that there's an inspector that's going to call you and come to look at your house sometime this week, if not next week. And it's, oh, by the way, you may be eligible to have improvements to your home, including an elevation. So I asked, okay, really? Well, I can't really talk about it. The person that's going to come to your house will let you know. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. There is no programs in place right now that you know of?
That's correct. You know, there haven't been approached with any programs with which to apply to, to even offer elevations to residents here in Little Falls through, whether it be FEMA, Blue Acres, one of those programs.
Yeah, and I think that's, Council President, is the frustration, because you're told one thing.
Right.
And then the reality is, no, it's not the case.
They say that, too. You know, they say, oh, you're eligible for mitigation, right? When I called them, oh, you could be eligible up to thirty thousand to elevate the house. It costs a hundred thirty thousand to elevate the house. Where am I going to get those a hundred thousand? I, I can't, you know, like, if I get a mortgage, what's that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. If I get home equity, that's going to increase my mortgage, right? Then I won't be able to afford my mortgage. So it's like, I'm going to stop in Little somewhere.
Councilmember Quadi, do you have any comments?
No, I, listen, I understand. I sympathize with what you're saying. I think the intention of the program with the letter that you received is that, and I, and I don't know for sure. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking speculatively myself. But I think the intention is that the federal government wants to make sure that there's insurance available to you. And if you left it up to the competitive market, that the premiums would probably be so high because, because the homes are such a risk. Once you're determined to be a repetitive loss, that nobody would be able to afford it for their homes. So.
This is exactly what they do.
I'm sorry?
That's exactly what FEMA is doing. They're increasing the rate so high. It's like you can't afford it.
Right. And so, and I understand. So in your case, the cost, even with the federal government stepping in and trying to keep the cost under control, it's still too much for you. And that is why you have my sympathy and my, my concern. But I, I hesitate to think that if your situation was left to open competition, that that would be better for you. And so maybe we, maybe we do, do need to look into whether there are alternatives for people in your situation and try and help. But, but right now, this question comes out of the blue for me. And so I don't have, I don't have a good answer for you, but we can certainly look into it for you.
Well, my suggestion is that they either, you know, fully pay for the elevation of property, since, you know, it was an eye that, you know, developed on a wetland and not, you know, elevated the property, you know, I didn't give a permit to build on a boat plane and not, you know, develop it where it's elevated, you know? It's not my fault that it was built there. Yes, I lived there. That's where I was lived. And they either take. And they either take the whole price to elevate it, they buy it out for the going rate, or they dredge the river and, you know, stop, you know, prevent flooding.
I, I.
River with berries, something.
I completely understand, sir, that that's what you would like to see happen. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to tell the federal government what, what we want them to do and expect them to just do it. I would love to see one of those options happen for you, particularly the, the elevation. But, but I can tell them that that's what they should do, and they don't necessarily answer to me.
Councilmember Havitt, do you have anything to add?
No.
Councilmember Seaver?
Well, I'm gonna further pursue this with Representative Nikki Sherrill to see what she could do in Congress about FEMA's outrageous increases, because, you know, it destroyed people's dream of falling down.
Mayor?
Right now, other than to say that I understand and can appreciate your frustration, you know, I'm almost at a loss of words. The federal government through Congress has suspended any funding being dumped into the Passaic River whatsoever by congressional order. So really, yeah, this is where the fight needs to be brought. It needs to be brought to our federal representatives, to the federal government, who need to allow there to be money spent to resolve issues regarding particularly the Passaic River for, for you. Without that, you know, we're, we're spinning our wheels, because they are the ones that need to fix this problem. And I, I actually, don't quote me on this, but I think only every 10 years they can decide what programs are suspended and which ones are opened. And I think it happens in the 2010, 2020, 2030 years. So I don't even know if this can be reviewed for nine more years. Don't quote me on that, but I was at a meeting some time ago, it was held in the Wayne Library with the mayors from every town up and down the Passaic River. And, and, and I'm, I almost, I recall that being one of the statements, that this is something that, and this was pre-COVID, that was gonna, that would be brought up in, in 2020. It wasn't approved again, and I think we have another 10 years or now nine years until it would even be eligible to be discussed for, for future funding. So, but listen, it doesn't mean now is not the right time to bring that battle there, to tell them that nine years from now, they need to remember, and then eight years from now, and then one year from now, when 20, you know, 29 comes along, so that they do remember to provide and offer the funding to, to resolve that issue.
Did, like, you guys get in touch with the, you know, like Nikki Sherrill and the state Congress people?
Yeah, she was at that meeting with, with the, with the other federal representatives. So, so yeah, certainly, it's, you know, something that, that I can reach out about. Because again, getting support for our, our Pacman Passaic River is definitely something that I support.
Thank you, sir, for coming out. Floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54, Harrison.
Good evening.
There's three in Little Falls. Did I hear you correctly when you said that the, all the funding for the Pacman River, even that tunnel that is gonna be, it was supposed to be funded to prevent the flooding of the Pacman River? Is it out of the question?
If the word Pacman came out of my mouth, I was mistaken. No, all of that conversation had to do with the Passaic River.
With the Passaic.
The Pacman River was recently submitted under a new bond. And what they're looking for now is for funding to get the engineering completed on it. That's the next step, that's what we're waiting for now. That still remains eligible.
Okay, all right. I thought, I thought you had said Pacman, that's why, yeah. I, I don't know what to tell these gentlemen, to be honest with you, because I'm in the same case. I'm, I'm on the same boat. It's just that, to me, it's, it's unbelievable, the fact that you can only get insurance through FEMA, through the government, basically. You cannot go to a competition because the government. And I think I have the solution. And the solution is that they created this problem, and they want this problem to continue. They do not wanna solve it. Because as long as they, they have you, by the, you know what, they have you under wraps. They're not interested in what you had, what, what you suffer or what I suffer. That to them, they, they rather send the money and prove overseas. They'd rather send money in billions of dollars overseas than take care, than taking care of the problems that we have at home. And that to me is, yeah, and the solution is vote them all out, all of them. Because it has, it's a proven fact, they are all worthless. I don't know how to say that in, I can say it in Spanish if you want me to, but I think.
Unfortunately, Mr. Fernandez, you can't say it in Spanish.
I, I think you get the point. It's a shame what they're doing to the American people. It's a shame what they are putting the taxpayers, the ones that fund it and, and supply the money for the government. It's a shame what they're doing to them, how they are putting us last on the list. They should be ashamed, they should be, in other nations, if you conspire against the government, the Taliban, they put, they hang you, they kill you. Here, we have to call them honorable. And we have to address them as honorable. They're nothing but a bunch of thieves, crooks. They should be against the wall or on, on the electric chair. Unreal what they're doing to the, to the, to the, to the American people. Anyway, I think I've said enough about this. And I really don't wanna get more excited about this subject. Major, I had a, I'm gonna ask you a few questions, because I think some of the, the residents emailed you reference to, in reference to the, to the COVID update, and they haven't, they haven't had an answer. So I was wondering if you can give us an update on the COVID as of the weekend, the 24th, September 24?
Sure thing. I actually expect the email for that to be going out at some point this evening. The website administrator is on a vacation where he doesn't have immediate access to internet, but it was sent to him.
Okay.
There were 20 new cases this week. Let me get the specifics, I have them here somewhere. Of the 20 new cases this week, oh, bear with me here, I'm sorry. Of the 20 new cases this week, four were fully vaccinated, nine were not vaccinated, four could not be vaccinated due to age, and three were unreachable.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure it wants to send the email if they are listening. Now you get the answer from me. And I'm gonna make a comment, because I've been attending these meetings, as you know. Probably, I'm the long, probably I'm the oldest person here in the room that attends these meetings. I'm going back quite a few years ago. And quite a few years ago, we had a problem, we, I like to include myself as a resident, as a taxpayer, and a resident of Little Falls. We had a problem with the attorneys. At that time, there was a father and son team. And every time we ask a question, they were both named Joe, by the way. I'm not gonna mention the last name, but those people that have been around know the last name. And every time, today, Joe, father, will show up. At the next meeting, Joe, son, showed up. So you ask Joe, father, a question, it's, well, Joe, the son, is gonna answer you the question. Ask Joe, son. And you ask Joe, son, it's, ask Joe, father. I was wondering if we are gonna have the same problem with, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
Counselor Friend, F R I N D, yes, sir.
All right. And Joseph Wenzel. I was wondering, and, and this is just out of caution more than anything else. If we ask you a question, are you gonna refer and not have an answer for us and say, you know, you gotta ask Councilman, uh, Wenzel?
So.
And if we ask Wenzel, Councilman, Wenzel, is he gonna give us the same answer? You gotta ask, you know, the other gentleman.
So, Mr. Fernandez, what you're asking is that Mr. Counselor Friend here, if we were to ask him questions, is it a waste of time? Because he may not know the answers, because he hasn't been sitting on the council meetings.
Are we playing this game?
No, but listen, I, they are partners, Mr. Counselor Friend is here because.
They were partners.
Joe Wenzel cannot attend the meeting, so we have Councilman President here. However, I'd imagine if Counselor Friend can answer the questions, he would. If there's something that he wouldn't be able to answer, he wouldn't. Now, Mr. Wenzel has a, a really good record of attending council member meetings, as you may know, because you attend them and he attends as well. But there's been a little conflict, so he can't attend. That situation isn't gonna be occurring.
Okay, but by the way, those two, they were foreigners.
Yes, well, they were father and son.
Yeah.
Yes, very aware of it.
And.
But thank you for that point, I understand. But I'm not, listen, I don't wanna be wasting my time either. If the question is asked of the council, we would expect an answer.
We expect an answer, exactly. Not the runaround.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward? Anyone on Zoom would like to come forward? Okay, thank you. At this time, can I have a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi. Seconded by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor to close to the public comments signify by, I'm sorry? Okay, okay, that's fine, we'll give them, give them an opportunity to speak. Do we know who it is? Hello?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Stay in. Just please.
Suzanne Miller, 122 East Main Street.
Good evening.
Hi, I just had a question on what exactly are the plans for the Water Company's property on East Main Street and Hobson Avenue?
Right, you, you'd like an update on that. Mayor, can you tell us where we stand?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, the Water Company intends to seed the lot there and keep it a vacant lot moving forward. They were having issues with some of the trees and the root systems, potentially impacting the water mains that run under the property there. So they intend to seed the, seed the lot and keep it then maintained.
I think there were, Mayor, out there today, were they not, Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes, they were out there. They started on the right side on the Hobson end, but they haven't touched the area where they were supposed to be starting to clean up again. So there was somebody with a backhoe, just cleaning some of the dirt, moving it around. So they're gonna be back tomorrow, so I'm assuming they're gonna be there all week, kinda working on that.
Does that answer your question?
No, because I was told that there were no records regarding communication, everything that was verbal between the town and the Water Company. And that just doesn't sound right to me. There should be some kind of documentation. The residents have a right to have access to any township public records. There's like a residential rights-to-know law. So that I was told via email that everything was verbal. And that just doesn't seem right to me. Doesn't sound legit. So I just wanna.
I can tell you.
Well, let me, let me just back up on how this all came to be. There was, there was a meeting with myself and Councilmember Vanchery and with the Water Company. So I don't know what documentation we would really need for that meeting, but that's what was discussed, then what would happen? And that was through the offices of the mayor that that meeting take place. So everything is transparent, there's nothing here. I, I don't think an email communication is necessary. I mean, the Water Company said they were gonna do certain things, and that's the things they've been working on. So I'm not quite sure that we're doing something wrong here.
Well, I, I just, I have emails back and forth from myself and Chris saying that, he had said that the trees were removed, and there was a plan with the Water Company to replace trees in areas that were away from the power lines. And now I'm hearing that no trees are gonna be placed there.
So from the last meeting, I can jump in. We met with them about a month ago. They told us that based on where the pipes are, and if you look underground, there are two seven-foot-wide pipings that are underground on Hobson Avenue and run parallel on the street down the other side of Hobson and end up towards the DPW. From the last meeting we had with them, they told myself, Council President Scobah, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Di Maria that they have concerns about planting permanent trees because of what's underneath. And 50 years ago, when they planted the trees, nobody thought about the roots growing in and getting close to the pipes. So they were able to leave like three or four trees at this point, and they said as they continue to re-grate and clean the area, they'll figure out what's next step. So we were told by the contacts there that they'll assess it and provide updates going forward. But for now, they're keeping it as is in terms of the trees, and once they grade everything and clean it up, we'll see what's next. Again, it's their property, and if those trees are causing issues with the pipes underneath, that could be a bigger problem for us down the road.
Well, I'm just saying.
That you would like to see trees on this property, or not?
Absolutely. I mean, not only just for the air quality, and it, it also definitely helps soak up any kind of excess rain. And now that there's nothing there, and it's just an open lot, any slight bit of rain, it becomes like a swampy, muddy mess.
Right.
You know, regardless if you're gonna replant and even if, you know, reseed and put grass in there, it's, it's gonna be a mess regardless. And it's gonna just amplify any kind of access, excess flooding going on. Because the trees being there, although maybe some were in the way of the power lines, it definitely helped absorb, like, when there was large storms, there was never, ever floods like there has been the past two times, the past two day, two, you know, past two, few times it's rained.
Councilmember Vanchery and myself, through the office of the mayor, will get back in contact. We have her contact information. And see what resolve we can do with getting certain trees maybe planted there to beautify that area. So this is something that has actively been discussed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and they said to give them some time, because then, you know, we learned as we had the conversations with them a few months back that, you know, they weren't maintaining the property. They were literally coming out once per quarter and have been written up several times by Mr. Di Maria's department. And, you know, we've asked them to make the effort to clean this, but they also asked us to be patient. It's gonna take some time for them to get the area where it needs to be. So we'll keep you posted on that.
All right, because then, then I heard something else from the guys in the Water Company that you basically took over that land and are responsible for maintaining it. They, they gave you the approval to do that, the township, not them.
Not true, that's not true. They know that's their property. They were looking for any kind of help from us, but it's their property, so they're responsible.
So the town is not gonna be responsible for maintaining, replanting, it's on the Water Company's?
No, the goal is for them to, to maintain it, because it is their property. If there's things we could help with, that conversation did happen when we met with them a few months ago. But the goal is for them to kinda lead the charge, because it is their property.
Okay, so we still don't know then what or who will be responsible, other than maintaining of that as far as.
The Water Company. No, the Water Company, that's why they've had crews there. They've cut the grass more than they ever have probably in the last five years on a daily basis. And again, because they were doing it once per quarter, and when they did it, they would just kinda run in, leave a mess, and then come back in three months.
Okay, well, I've lived here over 23 years, I've never seen them cut the grass and leave a mess. There's never been a mess there.
Right, they didn't really trim the hedges, like, you know, when you cut the grass on your property, you wanna do from soup to nuts and make sure everything. You would have the signs that said no through traffic and a parking sign there. There would be weeds growing in and out of it, there was a lot of tree and debris. And if you looked at when they were cleaning up the property, there were tires, there were probably parts of an engine. There was tons of boxes, it was becoming a dumping ground as well with a lot of their trees that were in pretty bad shape as well.
Okay, I mean, maybe that was far into the, the woods, but it wasn't like at street level where you could see all the garbage or anything like you're talking about, but.
Yeah, and when they went in there, too, they found that there was probably like a dozen or so stumps that were cut from years ago that were never cleaned properly and removed. There was a lot of things they learned, because they did admit to when they sat with us, it wasn't a priority for them. Unfortunately, because they'll tell you that they have so many different properties to maintain, not only in New Jersey, but also in New York. So they just weren't getting, getting to as much as they would like. Of course, we wanted them to do the same thing.
All right, well, like I said, I mean, somebody mentioned that it, the trees were cut down because on everything. Of the other issues, it was an eyesore. Well, now it's beyond an eyesore, this is.
Well, they did have dead trees as well, they had some ash trees had to be removed. They had one, if you remember, it looks like a harpoon that was dangling there. So, and then, again, it's their property, they came to assess it, and all their engineers and people in their department said, look, we have to clean this up, because there were bigger concerns underneath.
Okay. So I heard, I, I heard the township fined them or, or sanctioned them for leaving things there, so.
They did, because, you know, if you look at our code department, if you remember a few months back, residents were upset that they were getting warnings about cutting the grass that was a little higher than usual. residents were upset that they were getting warnings about cutting the grass that was a little higher than usual. They thought a water company that's not maintaining their property for a long period of time, and it was an issue. And because of that, we set up a meeting in person with them, and guess what? They acted on it. They, you know, again, it's their property. They can do what they see fit that's going to protect the piping that's underneath the ground.
Okay. That's it.
Any questions miss regarding that?
No, that's it. I just wanted to find out what the update would be as far as, you know, what's going to be done about kind of making it look better other than just an open grassy field.
Yes, I concur with you, but I also say I myself picked up litter in that area many a times. And although some of the high grass was hiding the litter when you got in there, unfortunately, there was a lot of debris skewed around, especially in the woods. So we're looking forward to that piece of land that the water company owns to make it much more unified. And I am sure down the road, if they were to come to the mayor and ask the mayor if they wanted to have us cut the grass for, of course, an economic trade-off, the mayor could also be open to taking care of that. But, you know, there would have to be some type of agreement struck by the mayor's office and the water company.
Yeah, and I would just say to just be patient with them because they did tell us that it's not going to happen overnight. They're looking to get everything in good shape hopefully by the spring.
Mayor, you have anything to add to that conversation?
No, that's all.
Is there anyone else who's different here that would like? Okay. Okay, can you hear us? It's.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, your name and address, please?
My name is Donald Wisniewski. I'm on 4 Hobson Avenue, Little Falls.
Can you please say that again? We're having trouble hearing you.
I'm Donald Wisniewski, number 4 Hobson Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the first house as you enter the street on the right. I've been talking to the water commission people for many, many years and talked to the gentleman who cut the lawn, and they did not a bad job for almost 65 years. I'm here 48 years. They told me that they were going to clean up the area. They were told by Little Falls to clean up the area. They told me that there was no problem with roots under the ground doing into the, into the pipes and whatever, because their tree's been there for 85 to 90 years. They told me that was a lie. That was not true. They told me that they cleared up the ash trees. They cut them down. And then they were leaving the rest of the trees because they knew the water was deterred from the brook when it came over. It slowed it down. You can't stop water, but it slowed it down. And I told Mr. Van Cherry, when the trees are all being removed, which I heard they were given violations to remove every tree, that we would, he was setting me up in our street for the worst floods ever. And it happened two weeks later. The water was fierce as ever. I got $25,000 worth of damage to my property. I have a sinkhole in my backyard, which we never had. I've been through three floods before, a hurricane, and never had this devastation since the trees were taken away. The barrier was broken. The saturation of the ground was depleted. It was horrendous. This has set us up for the worst time ever in Hobson Avenue. We're almost like a William Street, not as bad as those poor people, but we're on the verge of that. The next wave comes, it's going to be the same thing. They're going to seed and put super seeds and put the, all this dirt, they're going to bring a truckload of dirt. When the next wave comes, guess what happens? The dirt is gone, and I'm left with mud, and we're left with mud for the next two lots. I cleaned up two hurricanes. I had an easement lot next door, which I don't want anymore because I want them to cut the grass. They told me they're not cutting the grass. Your town is going to cut the grass. They told me they're very angry for what's been going on between the town and the water company. Now, who's telling what stories and whatever? But meanwhile, we're the victims on Hobson Avenue for the devastation of these trees and the removal of all these trees. Visually, it looks horrendous. We looked. Mr. Van Cherry, I said to me, I said, you see what we see now? We see telephone poles and wires. He said, I didn't know the telephone poles were there. Well, you should have investigated before you took down all the trees and hid some of the stuff that was not nice. Now this looks like a tenement. And we talk about tractor-trailer trucks up in the new development on Main Street coming there. We've got 10, 15 trucks going past Little Falls on top of Hobson Avenue every day, which is horrendous. So this area is not looking so wonderful for the residents of Little Falls on Hobson Avenue.
Can I jump in?
If you don't mind?
Yes. Thank you, sir, for joining us this evening. Councilmember Cherry, you'd like to comment to the residents' concerns?
So, Mr. Wisniewski, I can tell you this, and Council President Scobah was there with me, as was Mr. Campbell and Mr. Di Maria. When we met with the water company, they made it clear that they were cleaning up the area. They were taking the trees down because there were concerns. And if you remember too, when we knocked on your door, they had an issue with some of the trees that were there because it was on their property, and they said they could not have anything in the ground. You were there that day. You heard Mrs. Alengro and her staff tell you that directly. So to say that, listen, keep in mind too, you have some of those contractors that are working cutting the grass during the day. Unless they're a water company employee and they work with Maria, that's who you should get the information from. Not somebody who's just cutting the grass that's being paid by the water company that's saying that, oh, there's nothing wrong with this. We were told when we had two meetings with them, this is what they want to do. This is how they're going to clean it up. Give us some time. We'll regrade it, make it look better. When it comes to trees, we were hoping they were going to put some more back, but as of now, they said they cannot do that. They will reassess it. So please don't put words in my mouth because I don't appreciate that. And we did get 11 inches of water, and there were bigger issues from the Peckman along the Main Street Bridge where water was raging. So, you know, don't just say that you were all infected. We were all affected. But we have closest $70,000 worth of damage to my home, okay? So to say that we told the water company to do this and do that is not the case. We had a meeting for a reason because it was an area that was in need of a little re-vitalization and a cleanup. And based on their assessment, again, it's the water company's property. They can do whatever they want with that property. If you look across the way from your house, what's over there? Nothing. It's just open land. They even cut some more trees down over there. They like it open that way because it's easier to protect what's underground. Council President, if you want to jump in, you were there for that meeting?
Yes, so I understand the way this area looks at the current time. And the mayor has, you know, also realized this and all council members that right now it's an open, sort of an open pivot. They were there today grading. They're going to be coming back, and the land would be much beautified than what it was. Also, those trees that were there, they were going to take them down regardless because they were ash trees. So what they're doing is to make the property better. I get it. You have to, you know, look at something that's not positively nice to look at at this current time. But in the future, when it's graded and done, it's going to be a very nice-looking area.
You're not understanding what I'm saying.
I'm sorry?
The ash trees were taken down because they were dying. They told me, and the lady who was in charge was there and said that we're going to leave the rest of the trees up. They're okay. And she points out the many trees. This one's staying, that one's staying, that one's staying, that one's staying. Then, two weeks later, they said they got violations to remove all the trees. I'm worried about the flow of the water being slowed down by the trees. And when they put the beautiful grass here and the flood comes again, the grass is gone, and there's no stopping this water. You can't deter water. You could deter water by the trees and the roots holding it. They said they're not, they told me again, three, four people on the board in the water company that they were not worried about roots in the ground. So who's saying what, whatever? This is what I was told. All I know is I was a victim. I was the victim first of the flood this time. Two weeks prior to that, I got four inches of water in my basement, which I never got with that little bit of rain. The second one creamed us all. So this is where we stand. Whatever you do, something should be done, like the girl said across the street. Trees should be planted to hold the ground steady, to hold the grass down, because it's going to be washed away in the next flood.
Mayor, I don't think the, your staff goes out and gives violations to those trees. I don't.
There are definitely no violations issued between the time they started work and the time that they, and now.
The next speaker, is that Francis Schultz?
Yes.
Francis Schultz, the floor is yours.
Very respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, my questions are related, but not quite. Can you give me a little bit more information about the flood board and how it works? Is it open? How do people get put on the flood board? And does our flood board interact with other townships that are also affecting the Peckman River? And the potential of us being the downstream recipient of their decisions?
Ms. Schultz, that's a great question. Mayor, would you like to explain how this flood board works between the three towns?
Sure, there was a regional flood board created between Little Falls Totowa and Woodland Park. This new flood board was created, I would say, we're in our third year currently. And I know that because Mayor Kazmark was the chairman the first year. I was the chairman in 2020. And Mayor Coro over in Totowa is the chairman this year. So we're in our third year of this regional flood board. The flood board is made up of the mayor, the DPW superintendent, the OEM coordinator. I'm sorry, the mayor, the DPW superintendent, the OEM coordinator, and two municipal members, two town residents from each of the three towns for a total number of 15 individuals on every, I'm sorry, 15 individuals on the board itself. And the mayors are permitted to appoint an alternate in their spot at the meetings. The last meeting that I called was in the beginning of 2020 during the year that I was the chair of the flood board. That was, again, just prior to COVID. And of course, throughout, you know, the year 2020, COVID was a strong and a concern. So there were no other meetings held in 2020. And Mayor, and I'm going to be reaching out to Mayor Coro over in Totowa, ask him to call a meeting this year. And hopefully, we'll have an in-person meeting. Little Falls has been hosting them. We have been hosting them here in our council chambers, regardless of who has been the chair so far. I remain happy to continue to host here. I'm not sure, but that will be up to Mayor Coro over in Totowa, since it is his year to chair the board. So that is the makeup of the regional flood board. I will say Totowa has been a great partner with respect to the Passaic River and the conversations that we've had. They have also been very willing to sit here and listen and provide assistance regarding the Peckman River, although the Peckman River does not impact them at all. So they have been a good partner for us and have certainly been at least willing to listen when it comes to Little Falls and Woodland Park having conversations over the Peckman River.
Ms. Schultz, for the record, can you please tell us your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Francis Schultz, 280 Main Street, Unit 410.
Thank you.
So my question wasn't completely answered. I had a couple of other parts to it. One was whether those meetings are open. And then more importantly, all of the towns that you mentioned are downstream from us with on the Peckman. One of my observations has been that since the new development went up to the, in Cedar Grove, next to the hot, the nursing home up there on Linsley, that the flooding has been dramatically worse. A lot more debris coming down when there are, when there are high waters. And that's in Essex County. That's not covered by the flood board that you're talking about. And I'm really concerned. We're the downstream recipients of any development that they're doing. How does that get addressed?
Sure, so that's a great question. And that is actually, goes back to, previously, there was a regional flood board that included Cedar Grove, Little Falls, and Woodland Park. Little Falls and Woodland Park decided to withdraw from that flood board because it was Cedar Grove's position that the Peckman River should remain in its natural state. And that was a major issue that we had with Cedar Grove as a partner in this regional flood board with their position being it should remain in the natural state because they were not doing anything to do any desnagging. They were not removing shoals. They were not doing any of the things that we have serious concerns with here in Little Falls and is part of the reason for the withdrawal. They, I believe, have a number of residents who, for the first time in maybe their history, got flooded as a result of IDA. And it seems that a number of residents in Cedar Grove have some concerns over the state of the river upstream. And you're absolutely right that as far as the Peckman goes, the partnership includes the two most downstream members because after passing through Little Falls, it goes into Woodland Park. And through Woodland Park, it dumps into the Passaic River, which is when it makes its way out to the ocean. So you are correct. But again, our upstream partners have not been, I would say, good partners to us here in Little Falls in their desnagging and river cleaning efforts.
Can I ask one more ancillary question?
Sure.
So in all of these different boards and committees and on the planning board side where the approvals are made for developments that may cut down a lot of trees, may not be putting in enough catchment area or enough rain garden area to absorb all this water, how is that all coordinated? There are hydrogeologists on any of these boards to help to pull a concerted picture together so that these groups aren't working in counter to one another?
So there, this is something I may defer to our township engineer to answer a little bit with respect to water and retention and what is now required under the state water regulations for retention on new developments and things of the sorts. But there are regulations and guidance in place that require, you know, developments to retain water on site that require, you know, less stormwater runoff than there is now. But again, those are only planned for up to, you know, whatever, whatever year storm, whether it be the 50-year, 100-year storm or the comparisons that they use for how much water needs to be retained and how much they need to slow runoff onto the existing system. Mr. Romanowicz, can you expand on that a bit?
Yes.
Can you hold the mic closer?
Yeah, we can't hear him.
Yeah.
Okay, third time. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has regulations with respect to stormwater control of development. Whenever you develop this piece of property, you make impervious surfaces, and that's where you get your additional runoff. The state requires that developments create detention systems so that the rate that the water runs off the property is actually less than that that currently exists. And that ranges up to a 100-year event, which in this area is about an eight-inch storm in 24 hours. They also require that the development maintain the amount of groundwater recharge. And what they do for that is they basically make some kind of seepage system that holds the water so it's forced to go into the ground. And they also require that the system remove total suspended solids, which could be either trash, it could be the snow grits, it could be whatever. So they track that for removal so that does not go into the watercourses and clog up pipes and streams and such, which obviously affects their capacity. So there are statewide standards for the control of stormwater runoff from development properties.
I would like to respectfully say that I feel like we're back where they wanted to put all those townhouses along Wilmore Road and the Peckman River, where we ask the question, just because it's flood, just because the state flood map says it doesn't flood, and we have seen it flood, can you still say it doesn't flood? So I feel like we're back in that same kind of Catch-22 because certainly that, those protections that the engineer just outlined were not put into place when those new townhomes, when those new condos were built up on Linsley. All you have to do was walk along Linsley. You can see there are no catch basins. There's a hill between the condos and the Peckman River, and the trees all got washed away in IDA because there's no detention base in there. So how does that get approved? How does that get fixed now that it's affecting all these residents downstream in Little Falls?
I'm not familiar with that, with that property personally, so I really can't help you with that one. Now, but these regulations came in in 2004, so I don't know if that development's old yet.
That development was only built, somebody help me out, five years ago.
Okay, again, I don't, I don't know the project, unfortunately.
I'm trying to look up the name of it. Thank you, though. I appreciate the input.
You're welcome.
Ms. Schultz, do you have any other questions? All right, do you, Ms. Schultz, do you have any other questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, it's Mr. Miller?
This is...
Miss, Miss Miller, I'm sorry. I can't see from here. Ms. Miller, the floor is open. Would you like to speak?
Uh, yes, yes. I just wanna follow up on, uh, Miss Frances's, uh, question that wasn't answered. Are the flood meetings...
Please state your address.
One twenty-two East Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, her question wasn't answered regarding, are the flood meetings between the towns open to the residents?
Uh, give us one moment. The mayor has to get his mic back. He serves on the board. Mayor, are the, uh, are the flood, regional flood board meetings in the public attend? Is it, that's your question, Ms. Miller?
Yes, or, yeah, just how, how are we to get information on what's...
Are there minutes to the meeting, or how does any information from that meet, meetings get out to the public?
Sure. So while I have, uh, a question about this, just to clarify, first, it was actually, Woodland Park was the chair in eighteen, Little Falls was the chair in nineteen, and Totowa was the chair in twenty. It's actually Woodland Park's year to call a meeting this year in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I actually also misspoke regarding the makeup of the board. It is the mayor, a council member, DPW superintendent, and two members from the public from each, not the OEM coordinator. I misspoke because the OEM coordinator attends the meetings as a member of the public from here, here in Little Falls, and serves as my alternate, and I'm unable to attend. Uh, as far as the meetings being public, they are very public. They are posted. They are published meetings in the newspaper, as are council meetings and all public meetings that we have here in municipality. They are open to the public. They always have been, uh, and they will continue to be. It is an official board that is created by ordinance through this township uh, and will continue to serve in the, in a very public and open setting when the meetings are had.
So are they, are they on the calendar where, like, like this Zoom meeting, where we can click in and, and listen in on, on those meetings?
Again, it's the three towns combined. I don't know if, uh, depending on where the meeting is had, if there's Zoom capabilities or not, they're certainly, again, they're open to the public, uh, so it may require in-person attendance or appearance. But, uh, I, you know, again, depending on where the meeting is had, it may be on Zoom as well.
But, but it's listed on, on the calendar?
It'll be posted as every other public meeting is, yeah, officially in the newspapers, published and everything.
On, on, on the calendar, on, on the website?
Oh, the website calendar, yes. Once they're scheduled, they're posted on the website calendar, yes.
Okay, that's what I want. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Per, anyone else? Thank you to all the residents who joined us this evening. Have a motion, uh, to close the public comment.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember and Cherry, second by...
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kwadi. All those in favor of closing to the public comment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion is to, by saying nay. I want to thank again the staff for helping us put on this meeting. I know it's a challenge, uh, but thank you for all your, uh, time and effort, and Nelson, thank you for helping us out. Have a motion to close, to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Seaver.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Havus. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.